This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Let's just give Scott a minute to get in the building and then Mary Jane, you and Jim will have the floor. Good evening or good afternoon, Jason.
Hey, Jason.
How is everyone today?
Good thanks. How are you?
I am living the train.
Yes, Scott. Hello. Your seat, your seat. Okay, we have everybody on the agenda, so that we expected. So the first item on our discussion agenda today is this giving Mary Jane and Jim the floor. And you have the you have the honor of addressing the village board.
Thank you. Jim, take it away.
Well, I'll start, but I want you to fill in MJ. You know, I think you're all familiar with talking, I think, for about four or five months, maybe longer, about a destination management plan and the need for it. I think we've all seen, especially this year, that tourism industry has changed and it certainly is. It's a large component, probably the largest component of our economy, but we're at the point where, you know, how do we want to evolve over the next five to 10 years in tourism? What role does events play? We've certainly heard a lot over the last couple of years about the short-term rental situation. And what other issues do we have that we should really be focusing on and getting the information together to feed into the comprehensive plan? So we've moved, we've met with a lot of different organizations, certainly our board, the town board, the development commission. I think we've talked once or twice with the village board about it. We're ready to move it now. We have budgeted some money for it in our annual budget. We've talked to the town about their endorsement and getting behind it. And we believe they might tonight do, you know, a resolution to support the DMP. They do get some direct funding that we're going to supply some of it, we believe, to this program. And we're hoping that we can get not only the support of the village board, but a little help in the financial side of it and putting together. We think the time is right now to do it. And we think it'll end up, the overall goal is to position us better. So it's the community overall gets, takes more advantage of tourism. It's more equally around and we have better control on how it grows in the future. So that's, in a nutshell, MJ.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing that I would want to add to that is that I think, Jim, you'll agree for many years as a destination marketing organization, you know, 90% of our time and energy was front-facing towards the travel industry and looking to, you know, bring travelers into the region to, you know, help the lodging properties, the restaurants, the retail stores, you know. And of course, we brought in several events, endorsed other events. And, you know, as we look forward, we realize that we needed to turn more towards the community and understand what the community needs are. And we understand clearly that there is some tourism fatigue, there's certainly event fatigue. And how do we use tourism to support the community? So that tourism is here for the community and the community is not here for tourism, I think is what we're really trying to accomplish. And although we, of course, you know, would like the financial endorsement, we really feel like this needs to be a community effort, that everybody needs to come to the table. Everybody needs to have a voice. And so at the end, this destination management plan is something that we all as a community agree on. If it comes from Roost, then it's just another thing that Roost is doing, you know. And it's not really part of the, you know, I'm not sure what it is, but it's something Roost is doing and it's about tourism. And so that's what we really want to change that conversation. So that Roost is part of the community, just like tourism is for the community and not perhaps what, you know, we've gained the reputation of in, you know, over the years. So we think that this destination management plan will help us all come together and start walking in the same direction from short-term rentals, from events, looking at more non-tourism-related industry to even out our, you know, our year, our, you know, economic impact that, so we don't have these dips in valleys and housing and, you know, so people can work and live here, you know, even going to public transportation and bikes and, you know, things that a lot of mountain destinations have that are enhancements for the community and the traveler can enjoy as well, for that matter.
Historically, no tourism success was built around the marketing effort. In the future, it's going to be built around the management effort of tourism. And this puts us in that sphere to start working on that. And as we said, it feeds into the comprehensive plan. The amount of research or the research that this will provide for the comp plan is, Dean feels is going to be very valuable moving forward.
Certainly it's fair to say that the conversation in the community is steering toward trying to redirect the quality of life in the community. And that does encompass, Mary Jane, everything you just talked about. I think there are several elements and wouldn't, I would agree with that, that if nothing else, even if we couldn't change any of those, and we probably can make some changes in most of them, we need to understand why they exist perhaps and address the segments that we can address. I think there's always going to be events here. But I do think, I do think that, like yourself, we know that there's event fatigue in the community. We hear it and we hear it from the very people that benefit from the events and the additional businesses on the street. But I guess the question is, can we be a little bit more, instead of constantly driving for quantity, can we steer toward a more selective process that will talk about quality of the event as it relates to the community? I think you're on a good, you're making a good point here.
So is there any questions about the destination management plan? It's quoted at 100,000. I think we have 73,000 budgeted for 2021 to accomplish this. You know, obviously we don't understand or know the fiscal situation with the village. We know the town is a little tight. And so we're just looking, you know, number one, for the endorsement, first and foremost, that the village board and community members embrace this effort and want to be part of it and want to see it through. It's about a six-month process. Six to, right, Jim, is it six or eight to 10?
Eight months, probably. Yeah.
Do you have to put out an RFP?
We did not. We do not have to do that. We did research companies and came up with the one that we felt had the most experience in mountain resort towns, which clearly the one that we're working with has that experience in a large amount.
And I think that Greg Oats did a presentation to the village board. Do you remember that? Seems like it was 100 years ago, but it was probably in the fall.
It was in the fall, yeah.
So MJ, it has been a while since the last presentation. I guess my question is, since the last presentation, the change that is happening as far as technology really integrating itself and disrupting across everything is enabling businesses to be a little bit more forward-thinking, aiding them in that sort of like touchless payments. Is that part of the process or is this, are we, or is it more of a macro sort of perspective? Like a sustainable situation for the environment and the residents that live there?
Want me to take that? Go ahead.
You're on. Go ahead.
Well, you know, yes, as issues or I'm going to say problems, but things are identified, they go into the plan. And if that is part of what is identified, yes, that becomes part of the plan. And clearly that's something that a lot of our businesses need. So, you know, depending on how the process works and the input that they get, there'll be certain targets of the plan that will deal with not only that type of issue, but also, you know, deal just as importantly with how do we want to end up five years from now with this short-term rental thing? Where do we really want to be? And so it's identifying the issues that are most important for us, utilizing tourism as a driver for the community, and then what do we have to do to implement it? And I think, yes, Jason, that would, that sort of thing would be part of the issues with the business community, I would assume.
And I think, you know, identifying that, you know, the current COVID situation is brought to light that this, I believe, is our future, right? The more touchless, the less contact, the just, you know, I think this is the way of our world. And so of course, we would want to incorporate that into the plan, just as much as we have to have the conversation about global warming and what will that look like for us in the future, especially in the winter months? And should we be talking about some type of, you know, additional indoor sporting facility? And that's not something that we put in the plan and then we say, okay, now we need to build it. I mean, it's in the plan that we know that that's something that we want and need to have for our future to be sustainable as a community. It also gives us the ability to have a roadmap. So as things come at us, we can go back to this, you know, the plan and say, well, that's not really part of our plan or actually that will enhance the plan or it's not part of the plan, but it should be. And maybe it's time to revisit the plan and update it.
Okay. Yeah, I just, there's an environmental that you mentioned, Mary Jane, that there's going to be, if we don't plan for it now, it just seems that there are too many layers between Orta, the town, the village, too many moving pieces to get everyone on board to deal with an immediate situation as opposed to thinking five and 10 years out and starting the ball rolling with a plan that can coalesce and everyone can get behind. This seems to be the plan that makes sense.
And, you know, Next Factor has, to our advantage, has done several of these destination management plans, from cities to small mountain villages to, you know, destinations in between. So they can pull from destination management plans that they've already created, like things we may not have thought of, you know, that are in the future in another plan that we might be like, well, that's not a fit for us or we would have never thought of that. But that's definitely something that we want to plan for the future. You know, and the more planning we do, the less reacting we have to do because reacting is slow and cunky and then you're just hurrying up and, you know, making decisions based on the elephant that's on our foot, you know.
And my last, since the university games of 2023, and if this takes six to eight months, is there going to, is that any sort of identification of short-term needs to prep the village slash town in order to prepare us to not just hold the event, but make it run as smoothly as it possibly can? Is that going to be incorporated into that identifying, say, a lack of services, transportation, mass transportation, a coherent plan? Would that potentially be identified and recommended?
Some of them would, but that organizing committee will be implementing a lot of those things as well. I think this might be a little broader in looking at those types of events. How do we manage them overall? I think it would be more effort and it's really a five-year look, which we think would probably be updated in four to five years again. But that'd be part of it because of all the influx we'll have in '23. But I think it'll be more based on how to accommodate those types of things.
And it want to also be about like how we decide what type of events we want in the future, opposed to how we manage them, like how do we decide, you know, okay, so what's the criteria for a World University Game or an international event? And what box does it have to check in order for us to want to host it?
That's correct.
Okay, so maybe I was a little too in the weeds, but taking a step back from a macro perspective. Okay, thank you.
So did I understand in one of your earlier comments that this in effect, again, you mentioned Dean Dietrich and the comprehensive plan, this might be a subset of our town and village comprehensive plan going forward, assuming that's adopted?
Dean thought that this would feed right into the comprehensive plan, Mary, is that some of the data that this would have, he would normally have through the comprehensive plan program. And this would help feed information and potential policies into that comp plan.
And that the steering committee, the dean's commission would be part of the steering committee for the destination management plan.
So are you saying, MJ, that there would be an ongoing conversation that would involve some of the key players that monitor the comprehensive plan or are responsible for it?
Absolutely.
That's for sure.
Along with, along with, you know, many other community members.
Understood.
And so the goal is to have the voices heard of the people that, you know, that aren't the 20% that are, you know, on these different committees and boards and municipalities and school boards, et cetera, et cetera, and kind of trying to reach a little bit deeper into the community. And that would be done by, you know, a combination of one-on-one, you know, town hall meetings, which might be town Zoom meetings and, you know, and then some subsets, maybe like the realtors, maybe it's the, you know, people that work in the municipalities, school, you know, people that work within the school system, you know, people that work within the restaurants and the retail and the lodging properties. And trying to get every, a conversation going so that everybody or more people are heard from, so that we really understand what is, what's needed and what's wanted and what direction do we need to go to be sustainable and healthy and, you know, happy. We need to be happy. I'm working on it.
So that suggests a model where, assuming this is successful, that the various organizations that we have today in the community all do their respective roles, I think, within themselves, but there's never been a forum that brings them together. You mentioned the town hall meeting concept, which I think has a lot of merit, even it was only done as Vermont does once a year. But just generally, I mean, I look at what Roost does and certainly in the tourism promotion field, you do your work and you all do it well. But we're all, we're all operating sort of within ourselves. We're not, we don't have a comprehensive forum. So if that's the objective or one of the objectives of this program, that might be one of the ways that the community could begin to feel some ownership in various functions that we do support.
That's clearly part of our goal, Mary, is to make that happen. Do they have, Mary, do they have town hall meetings in Peru? I'm just kidding.
Peru's South America, yes. Where it's warm right now. You can dump some funding early on and I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. And I suspect because it is on the town agenda for tonight's town board meeting, that maybe, maybe the town and village need to collaborate a little bit on how that would be handled. But I would, it certainly, it certainly could be handled from your perspective with a written proposal that we can respond to.
Okay.
Keep in mind that we're beginning to develop the 2022 budget. That'll start with our departments in a month.
Okay.
And generally, it's pretty well put together. This year, I'm not sure, I can't, I'm only speak until the end of March, really. But generally, the board gets it in the month of May and finalizes it in June.
Okay, that's a good timeline for us.
What would be the cost that the town and the village would be, that Roost would anticipate splitting? Was it the 20?
Twenty-seven, where I wrote down.
Yes.
But if we wait for the next, but we're not anticipating waiting for the next budget year for that, are we? Are we looking to move forward with this now, so to get some lead time in?
We would like to move forward with it now. And if we knew that there was a commitment, even if it was in the next cycle, we would move forward.
I think that's a topic we need to discuss as a board, as to what the, what, which way they would prefer to handle it. And also, I would need our, I would need some discussion with the treasurer in terms of where we are funding-wise.
Okay.
Great.
I'm not opposed to something if the board feels that it wishes to go in a direction where there's a commitment made early. Obviously, I can't commit this forward to something in the future.
Well, I submit, I would, I support it if we would act on it earlier, certainly. But that's, I'm just one of five, so just for any other board members, just to know that, that I support it, so.
Okay.
Everyone jump in.
Do you have any questions? Is there any?
There's probably a million questions that will come up as the plan begins to roll out. That's usually when you start to figure out how the engine's running.
That's what we hope for.
Yes.
We want all those questions to come out and the conversations to be robust and, you know, engaging and interactive with many different community members. Because that's what's going to make the plan successful.
We won't know until after the town board meeting tonight, but they do have a development director position on their agenda, which they may be acting on.
Good. We would, we would think that position would be really engaged in this process.
Certainly would. Other questions for Jim and MJ? If not, I thank you both for your time and reminder. We will take up the, and I presume what you're at least looking for is the same thing from the village board that you're asking the town board for tonight, which is a resolution to support.
Yes, we are.
You would like it even better if it came with some kind of financial commitment.
Correct.
You're right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Okay, bye.
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 Geez, I'm going to set up here for seven minutes. Okay, the next item that was, came up in discussion at the village board meeting last was a topic that I've asked Anita to address in updates. She's done a fair amount of research and that has to do with the upcoming village election. And I would add, I just had a conversation before I came downstairs with the supervisor. And the caveat or concern that we don't, we may not have an answer for quickly is what conditions we're going to have to live under, assuming the polling place is right here. Right now, the building is locked. The supervisor just put out a memorandum to everybody in the building, just saying, just a reminder, town hall is still not open to public. However, we did agree to allow special persons to come to our offices by appointment only and maintaining protocol at all times. If you have an approved person at your office, please set up a time to meet them. And this is noted at the back door and escort them back out of the building following your meeting. So that seems to be a little clarification on where we are right now.
They don't want it to appear as if the place is open. And I was like, I think Lori and Chelsea are particularly sensitive to all this. They don't want all that gathering happening right in front of their offices.
So, you know, I did question Jay a little bit about how this might impact on the March poll. Obviously, we've got a month and things can change in a month's time, hopefully. But just to give you a forewarning that I jokingly said, well, we may have to hold this election out in the center of the oval.
Well, actually, Nightcom talked about the fact that, I mean, obviously it didn't happen in winter, which essentially is what mid-Marchville is around here. But other villages didn't do outdoor elections for their last election, but I don't think that's an option either. Unless we got heated tents.
Anyway, the absentee ballot issue came up at the board meeting and Anita's been working on some other projects. So I just thought we would run down through those and give you what we know at the moment.
Right. So first I'm going to say, I'm sorry, I misspoke about Serenac Lake having mailed out absentee ballots. It wasn't absentee ballots they mailed out. They mailed out applications to every eligible voter. And that makes more sense, actually, and that is what I'm recommending today because it still puts some of the impetus on the voter to actually say they want one, not just have ballots all over the village when half the people aren't going to vote anyway. I spoke to Kareem Tyler and Serenac Lake yesterday. They sent out the ballots. They also sent stamped envelopes with them so that people didn't even have to go out and get stamps. That's something we have to decide on if we want to do that. Then interestingly enough, once they sent the ballots for the people who requested them, they did not send stamped envelopes. So I'm not sure what their thinking was there. But so I have a list, I got a list today. Currently, the village has 1,555 registered voters. So at $0.51 an envelope, if we just mail them out to everybody, that's $795.60. If we mail them out, plus include a self-registered stamp with that to us, that's 1,591.20. We can wait until Monday to make this decision, but we just have to decide if we want to put in that extra stamp or not. Then obviously, there will be the other cost of mailing them out to people who request the actual ballot. Just for a point of reference, Serenac Lake got about 9% of their ballots back. So even if we round that up to 10%, it would be about 155 people asking for mail-in ballots.
Keep in mind, though, that Serenac Lake's doesn't have a significant election this year. They just, they're the opposite of us.
Last year, they did. And that's why I'm thinking the numbers are approximately.
Yeah, the 10% will probably be, I would guess would be higher. But it is, it is a good option and one that I think we need to consider.
I mean, I think we, I definitely suggest we mail them out. The question is just the one stamp or two stamps. Then another question, which doesn't have to be decided today, but the thing about is, do we want to mail out ballots that are scannable or not? I've spoken, both Kareem and Allison McGee recommended not scannable ones. And I know that's different than what we had talked about last week. Allison said it's because in the county, it helps them to separate and explain any, it's cleaner and easier to find discrepancies if there are discrepancies. If you have one batch that's scannable, which are the people who come in that day, the other batch is a count. And the other thing Kareem said, you know, I know one of our concerns, Craig and I discussed this, is we'd like immediate results. But as Kareem said, even if it's scannable, it'll, it'll take time because she brought in a separate Republican and Democratic election inspector. Each of those people had to look at each envelope that came in, make sure it met the rules, everything was signed, make sure that that person had not already come in earlier in the day to vote, make sure that the signature matched. They were wrapped up at about, a little after 1:00 AM the following morning. And that's the other thing, in village law, we have to finish that canvas that night. It's not like our national election, which went on and on, depending on what state you live in. The count has to happen that night. So.
Or into the morning.
Or, yes, exactly. So for today, well, time for today because we're not going to make any final decision here, Jay. But like I say, the primary thing to decide on is whether we want to put stamps in both directions, whether we want to invest that extra $800 to make that happen. And I don't know if you have any other questions? I guess as Craig spoke to you about the building, it is a little concerning to me because, you know, Serenac Lake has that big town hall, that big auditorium. Even with that, she said that that night, they usually allow the candidates to come with as many people as they want. She said that she only allowed two guests per candidate. I mean, we couldn't even fit that in this room under current circumstances. I'm thinking we could allow it if people were out in the hallway so they could be nearby if they wanted to be, but they couldn't actually be in this room. She also banned that stage and that's where she She also banned that stage, and that's where she had the people counting the ballots, so that they would be a little bit, they could, it'd be visible, but people weren't hovering over them. So, oh, and as, as far as like coming in the back doors, and I discussed that too, that doesn't work for anybody who has any sort of disability.
That's right.
And obviously, people are going to be sensitive to that on election day.
And ideally, you'd like to have people coming in one door and continuing to go out, make opposite doors, so that they're not facing each other, which, which is, is kind of general rule that has been followed.
So, all those things can be figured out down the line.
Have we thought about breaking up what would be the, essentially, the, the different districts? There aren't many, if to say, just in the village, maybe one at the town hall, one at the beach house, one at maybe the school gymnasium?
There's only one district, though, Jason, that's, that, it, it would be an interesting idea, but at this point.
Yeah, it's not like the town, which has multiple districts. The village is just one district.
Nope. Well, they have different books, and there's different District One, District Three, I know of the village books. And we could break it up by that sort of, and it would separate people a little bit.
But it also created additional staffing requirement, and I think we're having difficulty finding enough inspectors as it is now.
Yeah, plus that would be more machines. I don't know if Allison could even make that happen. But I believe the village is just one district. I mean, I've never been sent separate books, it's just one A through Z village.
Well, we would be able to tell that from the vote, from the voter roll, voter roll list, which I don't know if you have it yet or not, for our copies to register voters.
I'll take a look at that.
And they're, they're usually listed by district.
Do we have that? Do we hold it somewhere else?
Well, that's, that's a thought that I had in my mind, is I'm wondering if, and, and again, the conference center has substantial room, but, and, and I know even over there, the main building is most of the time empty right now. And after the experience they had the last couple of weeks, I'm, something we can, we can explore and certainly show, because there's a lot more room over there.
Yeah, yeah. I could ask Jackie about the feasibility for that. I mean, like, for this meeting that Billy will be talking about later on today, they capped us at 20 people, so I don't know how that'll feel about having an election there. Even with all the space they have, she went to her higher-ups and was told 20 people's the max you can have.
Well, there's been other sort of athletic venues during the national election that were used as polling sites. I, I don't see it as a stretch, but I, maybe it is, was it Mike Pratt? Maybe that's a conversation with him, but maybe we could use it?
Well, yes. And again, that thought is, that, that has a discussion that Anita and I, we, we, we've been, this topic has come up frequently in the last few days, and I think we may have to look for a different location. I wasn't really joking when I said it might have to be held outdoors. Again, I, and, and, and then the question is, I mean, we're watching to some degree, Jason, what, what, what the state's set up even, even for the vaccine programs, and how cautious they're being with those.
No, the vaccine rollout, that's a whole nother.
Yeah. The state, the state conditions are the conditions that we have to.
I buy, buy it, sure. I just, the school gym is another, maybe a potential option, a Dr. Catania, maybe it was approached. It's, it's a much bigger space, and it's, well, between 12 and 9, I don't, 12 and 8, that might not work. School in session.
Right, right.
Might have a remote day, a bit of a snow day. Anyway.
We're grinding it out in person every day.
Those are some of the discussions so far. As Anita said, we don't have, we, we would not be making a decision here now, but I wanted you to have all the information that we know, and, and we continue to explore the options that may be available to us, because it's a moving target.
We're about, what is it, we're about five weeks out from the election now, so we're running out of time, so.
Yeah.
Five weeks, yeah.
Right, exactly. Yeah. I don't know if Mindy wants to weigh in on the $800 versus $1,600 if you have, because I have no actual money for this, but.
From my, as far as postage is concerned, I mean, we could make it work if we had to.
I think it'll go.
There is a contingency in the budget stuff that we can anticipate, so. And again, what's interesting to me is a year ago, the governor postponed, and let's hope he doesn't do that, but he postponed all elections until last September at, at that level, and, but they're silent on village elections.
Yeah, but then the national election happened, and it was proven that it could be done, and at the end of the day, this is much smaller than that, so.
And they were in that national election through, I mean, it was, again, there are multiple districts in the town and multiple polling sites that were upstairs here and Serenac Lake. But the reality is, we, we were able to conduct the District One, which is right here. So, more to, more, more to learn, and we'll keep, we'll keep, keep it on the table as an item, and still under consideration as to what we can do.
And today at 5:00 is the deadline for handing me petitions. I don't expect any more at this point. We have two mayoral candidates, three trustee candidates, I'm sorry, four trustee candidates, and, and the judge candidate.
Any questions for Anita or on, on that topic? I think, I think we've shared all the information we have at the moment. You want to comment on the emergency preparedness plan status? I think you're hearing back.
Basically, at the same spot. It was a week ago, two opinions have said it's fine, and three have not answered, so I'll follow up with Brian, who's their real intermediary, to ask him if we can move that along a little bit. Yeah.
The next item we have will be on, it'll be on the agenda for Monday, but the Lake Placid Public Library approached us and proposed, proposes to do a story walk, which, which is a group of, you'll, you'll have samples, copies of this. This was done out at John Brown Farm last fall, and it's, it's a series of posters that are lawn-size, that are spaced out along pathways, and they, and they tell a story. And what they're proposing, I think they're going to do another one this spring out at John Brown. They'd like to do one using the beach park walkways and around, around the tennis courts. There's just more people usually walking, and they're, they're, they're open as of date, anytime between June and, or I'm sorry, May and, May and, saw it in here someplace, mid, from mid-May through September, sometime in that time period. I've spoken with Bambi about it. They had a good success. I raised the question about vandalism, so I figured, but out there at least, they did not have those problems. And again, it's, it's kind of a stag thing. I did refer it over to the Arts Council, which is a new council under the Development Commission, and received back from them a thumbs up that this is something that they would endorse, that they do endorse and they like. Again, the Arts Council's objective is to find things that they can bring to the, the core of the community, where people can have, get some enjoyment out of them or some pleasure. In this case, it's a little bit consistent. The book they're choosing to work with is called Over and Under the Pond. It'd be about 25 different panels, located around those walkways. And the thought that they had is that this particular book talks about animal, animal habits, but it also talks a little habitats, rather. But they thought that it might correspond nicely with the discussions about Mira Lake and, and trying to keep the environment of the lake for, say, for, not only for humans, but also for land and fish life. I think they will be on, they will be on the Zoom presentation Monday night, Tuesday night, rather, I'm sorry. So you'll have an opportunity to hear from Bambi directly, but I just wanted you to be a little bit aware of, of what.
If the land use code allows, put signs up like that.
That's a good question. My, my, my sense is that something like this, which is, which is community benefit, probably falls under the same category as a blood drive, which there's no reaction to. I think we would be limiting the time period probably to a maybe a two-week window or something like that. It's clean, looks healthy and safe. The other nice thing about it is, you remember, we put that book house, little book house feature over in the park. That, by the way, has, much to my surprise, has not been a, has, has not been vandalized. And oftentimes, when I walk by it, I do find books, and apparently, they, they change from time to time. People, people contribute them, and others take them and read them. So, there's, there's some correlation here, I think, but in any event, just so you're aware of this before it comes up on Monday, I, I, there will be copies of this in your agenda packet, not in color, however, probably.
Unless you want to print them yourself that way.
The other question we had, and Anita has the file here, periodically, we get, we get requests from families that are looking to have a granite bench, memorial bench installed, and I think right now, we have a lady who has passed away since a long time, summer resident of Lake Placid, owned her home around near the lake. I did not recognize the name.
I'm sorry, I did not bring that file down, but I know you vetted her with Ruth Hart.
I did call, I did call the one person who I felt would probably give me a little insight, and it turns out that this lady has been a longtime summer resident, strong supporter of our local organizations, including Horse Show and I think Art Center. Ruth Hart was the person I called, and she very quickly said to me, oh yes, she said she's definitely someone that we, we would look at. The, the issues are a couple. One, we're, we're probably running out of places to put these benches at the moment. And number two, in the last few years, I, I, and Anita and I have this conversation every time this comes up, we try to limit these to local families. It's, I think in the very beginning, and this is history that Connie Devlin shared with me early on, I, I think the first couple of benches here were just people that wanted, that not necessarily a close tie to the community, but wanted a bench here. So they were done, but then they realized that most people walking by it don't recognize the name, there's no connection. These benches right now, we're, we're, we, the, the fee to acquire it, have it lettered, is, is running about $1,000, so they're, they're not insignificant. But as, as I leave office here, some of the, I, I don't want the corporate memory of this program to, there, there's really very, very little documents, the various benches that are around the lake. But I think if you look at them, the majority of them are, are family names that are well-recognized in the community for the most part, and they run, they run the gallant from, I think, Art Devlin to, from the Adler, and Irene Rupp in front of the Crown Plaza, for example. We have a, I work with Charisse and Brad, we have a list of all the existing benches and the, and the family names that they represent. There were two benches, one of them we know is still there, that were done by a group that was in town, Woodman Insurance, remember that, Brad?
Yeah, there.
And a, a, again, I think that's when Connie kind of came up with the approach that we should really restrict these to families, because there was a, the outside opportunity that anybody could, could drop in place here. We don't have that many locations really identified. So, I, I, I offer you that. I do think going forward, we, we try to create a file with a record of who we've got, and we don't get a lot of them, we get one or two, one and sometimes two a year. But we may, we may run out of available spaces. So unless, unless someone feels we should establish a different policy than what's been in place over the last several years, I think, I think we'll respond favorably to this one, it seems to be, based on the information that we have, seems to be an acceptable request.
Yeah, and like Brad, if you have any places to suggest for a bench, they don't have any partial space, so, you know, if you have any suggestions, I could let them know and they can come there.
They want it around near the lake, obviously.
Probably, probably, but if we had another decent spot, then I'm sure it sounded like she'd be open to it.
I think, I think another one going up the drive would be worthwhile for that sidewalk there, but.
It's been you there.
I'd still vote in front of the Lake Placid sign, like I said earlier, that way people can sit and take a picture.
Well, that's, that's another, that, that, that's something this board, but, but again, those signs are not in the village.
True.
But not all the benches are either, that go around the lake. Most of them are, but we've asked for.
There's a few. There's a few. I, I, I think, again, it was a community-sponsored, I, I don't know really where it got started. My guess would be maybe it was beautification or garden.
I'm sure.
But, but these things have a habit of, of, once, once they get started, they take on a life of their own, and instead, when somebody questions what you're doing, you try to look for something, and there's no, there's really no corporate memory of how it came to be. But like I said, the good news is, we only get one or two, one, sometimes two a year. I think the last one we did might have been Reed Record.
Yes.
And that's around the lake. And, and they have a mysterious way of moving around those.
Another reason the map is a good thing.
Yeah. Not very long.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have anything more of that. Brad, why don't you go ahead?
For the Main Street Project, all the paperwork is in. We should have a highway work permit and everything else we need soon, like any day now, unless something changes and they, they've added a few little things and some wording they want to change, but right now, we have the, every pa, all the paperwork's in, and like I said, anticipate any day now, we'll have a highway work permit, plus the insurance will be all the way they want it.
I did speak with Ivan this morning. The GIGP, which is one of the grants that we have, is, is, is going to expire the 16th, I think. I will be signing a letter requesting, to ESC, requesting an extension on that, which we've been, I think Jim Geiger indicated to Ivan, that would, that would be likely granted, given the fact that we've got all the.
Because they said it's going to be a problem.
So, clock is running, and we're trying to stay on top of it. It's all about paper.
Second thing with the Main Street Project, the work schedule, we were hoping to have it to us at the end of last week, beginning of this week, but I don't think it's going to be the end of this week now. We have a meeting, pre-construction meeting next week, this Thursday. We wanted that schedule in hand, but they're having a little trouble trying to fit everything into the breakdown, the way they have April to the end of June, and then September on. So they're, they're trying to get it as accurate as they possibly can, so we don't pick it apart. So, it's only by the end of this week, we should be able to have a copy of that before the meeting's being rolled out. To react to it. That's.
So when do you think the meeting actually is?
The meeting, the pre-construction meeting date that was set was whatever, the 18th, whatever, the week from this Thursday, it was like.
That was for you and I?
No, well, the coming tractor.
18th of February.
18th of February is what the date was set for, for the pre-construction meeting, but we were hoping to have the construction scheduled two weeks before. were hoping to have the construction scheduled two weeks before that. Doesn't look like that now. We've been harping at them. They told me they have it, like I said, at the end of last week. And then we actually have a meeting with Todd this morning, just to call with Todd. And he said he should have it to us by the end of next week. So I'll get a copy to everybody just so they can see what they're anticipating the construction schedule to be. There's going to be some changes, like I was, I told Peter one earlier today. Like they're going to have two crews going. So that's what's being, it's hard with the timeframe and the two crews, where we can have them working and where they're not. But that, we should have something at the end of the week. Everything on that's moving forward.
And that, that fits into a communications, community communications plan that is being developed alongside of all this. So that once the project, as the project starts, and if you went out on our website right now, you would, I think you would see a preliminary page. It's already been set up for this. That, the, what we contemplate is that information is going to be fed into that continuously throughout the program, which not only alerts the Main Street to where they're working, but also alerts the entire community to, so, so that they know exactly where their, where the detours are, for example, where the contractor's working. And it, it, it looks and sounds good. If it works, it's great. Art, I think you sat in on some of that discussion.
Yeah. Whether it works or not, it should be good information. I think it will work.
But already, already on our website, you'll see a preliminary page that's beginning to discuss the Main Street project. So it's, it's introduced in a general sense, but it'll get much more specific as it goes forward.
The one thing we do know, we, I hope we've mentioned that here, that the detour will be going up Main Street, so even from south to north. And Hillcrest will be one way coming to the church to the Crown Plaza. And something hill will be two way traffic. I don't know if we've mentioned that here. I didn't know until I moved away at the bottom. There is, there is working on another informational session like we did with the old Alti Construction Project. There's going to be another information session that has to do with the detour. They're working on that. There's a lot, a lot of work going in behind the scenes on that.
That work that, that company has done has just been on, I have no idea. It's, it's, it's as big as a construction project, what, what.
So right now, that's where we stand on the Main Street project. One thing I wanted to bring up about Main Street, I'm still getting asked about moving, they have a live camera feed around Deer Lake, just about the village town line, the backside of the lake. They keep wanting me to move it to Main Street. And I'm okay. What is that company with that, has that Phil set? Oh, with, whatever. It's a, it's a group through the watershed that they want it moved, has the purpose to move it because I cannot get the state to give me a thumbs up. And I don't want to, I don't want to cause anything with the state.
There was some discussion with Kimball the other day about, about, because remember Danek at one time had been talking to us about running a conduit. And I think Kimball is planning on a conduit. At this point, it's not signed any particular purpose, but you know, I'm not sure I understand why they would want it moved to Main Street.
All it is, is to monitor the road conditions, sidewalk conditions, and the application is solid with our monitoring.
So this would be similar to what they've got down the momentum road?
Yeah, it's, it's just around the lake. It's a little camera with a, what's happened is they said it would work great with their solar panel on it. We told them it's not going to work because there's no sun. Well, it doesn't work where they want to put it. They found out that it isn't going to work. So it takes a picture about every, once every two weeks. It finally got enough power that it can take up the picture. So they wanted to move it to a different location where they thought it could get more sun. But they really want to look at the Main Street. And it's up to everybody if they want to move it there. I just, until the state gives me that, 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 that I don't want here.
I, I would, I would, you know, I, I think you're correct in your caution that, 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 that really has been a state initiative and it's state by way. So I think we should be careful with that.
Unless we pointed directly at something that only involves us. I just don't want anything going back on the state. There's a lot of stuff going on there with assault. Issues with the state right now. So I'll, I'll wait and see if they.
And also frankly, putting the camera there with, with the project that we're anticipating completing. You know, they're, they're concerned about the salt going into the lake. We're taking that out of play. I can see other reasons for having cameras along Main Street. And we've tried that in the past and it has, under, under, under optimal conditions, it has not worked. And as I remember, the community wasn't overly thrilled with the idea either. Police cameras in the lake, like, more like the ones in the notch. The one up here is pointing down the street to see the trucks coming. The ones in the notch point directly down this way. So you're not going to catch any stuff directly underneath it. And that's what they're looking at is they, what they want to see is salt application with the conditions that are up. They don't want to see a truck going by laying salt down when there wasn't a condition to call for the salt. I see the point of it. They want to also catch the sidewalk because the one we're salting on the sidewalk. We have GPS equipment on our sidewalk salters in our trucks now, where I think they want to see real time, say, okay, the truck went by salting, it's putting down this application rate. What's the condition with the camera? That's what they're trying to do. But they're just not getting that bit of that. Well, again, I would think that the initiative for that would come from the state.
I'll touch base with Mark or with George and see if George can get in here.
Honestly, I'll tell you the fact that it becomes, that, that is more an opinion of somebody that. But I, I, you know, I, I think the, a lot of the purpose of this project that we're undertaking is to, is to eliminate the primary concern they have, which was Deer Lake.
He's trying not to get the state in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, they're working pretty well with us right now.
They certainly are.
We have on your beach hill, we're having a water issue with a loop at beach hill. Waterline is growing. Over the last 20 years, it's probably grown 25 times. It keeps breaking in the town section and flooding houses and they're having to pay for the damages because it's a known fact that there's a problem with it. When we started exploring the town replacing that line, I didn't realize that that section of beach hill that goes around, that we thought the whole one loop was town, the other loop was village. It's not. A chunk of that other loop is actually in the village. So it's about 900 foot of this water line would be village responsibility. Ivan is working on for the town getting a cost estimate. So we're going to use the same estimate for us. But our section, it doesn't flood anybody when it breaks because of the grade. So when our section, it's not, it's not like a big hurry. I anticipate our section to be done in-house. Once we get some of these projects rolling, when we have some free time.
So when beach hill is developed, the section in the first end that goes up to the left and comes around toward North, that was the original, that was town.
But, but what I thought was that original first loop.
Yeah.
With all town. It cuts, so also it's still in the middle and cuts straight up towards the hill, which I did not know that. So we started investigating this because the town, the town paved it a couple of times over the years. The towns, I think they anticipated, they just thought it was theirs. So you go up and it kind of cuts over and then it cuts up over the hill. I think Art saw the meta. It was, it was, I didn't think it was like that, but there is a section of it's 900 foot of the water line. We anticipated doing an artisan house. We can talk to the head of the legislature about this because they've had to pay twice in the last year total.
Yeah, I know that. I know it's been some.
In terms of very, very, they're made out of the concrete overs.
Six inch or eight?
Six inch water line up there, but it's buried. It's like 15 to 20 feet deep. So it's like, it's very, very dangerous. No, they said it was about that deep with anticipation. The road was going to be cut like, we're going to cut the rope. Never got it. So, but the problem is it's cast iron pipe. It's real thin. It's like inferior pipe. It's very, very deep. And that's what caused it. I mean, it's, there's a clamp on it every 10 feet. I think sooner or later it would move with the ground and it wouldn't break again, but still breaks. We just had one two months ago. That's the one that flooded the, not even two months ago.
Did you say your goal was that it would be all of them?
Yeah. Then, then hopefully it wouldn't break. But, but that's just something that, going to the town board meeting tonight to discuss this with them, that, about them, they're going to have to get a contract. There's just like 1700 feet. It's going to be, it's going to be a substantial cost. Looking at probably a hundred and fifty dollars a foot to install an inch pipe. And then probably between three and $5,000 per service line to go back and put it all because of the debt. So it's going to be a substantial plus payment. It's going to be a substantial cost for them, but.
So you're going to cost estimates and what you were saying. You have to keep existing hurdles because there's, there's tape as well.
So you're, so you're going to have to come out. The, the only good thing is you can run the new main block. And then you'll have to dig down to the left. But that's going to be a plus when you're putting the new main in. But it's going to be a pain to go back and tighten it. But like I said, our section, I plan on, I'll give you a cost estimate for material, but it will be right away. We'll be doing ours at house. We'll just do it ourselves. We need to have an engineer plan and the, the Department of Health has to stamp off that it's okay to do it. But we'll be doing all the digging and stuff.
Now, we definitely go against town water rate.
That would, that, that would be a benefit district. Yes, they would have to spread it out over that district.
On the property taxes.
But it would be a benefit for that district.
And the water line is our portion is when you first come in, it's part goes off to the right, comes
goes to go to the right and to the top of the hill.
And then from there, the other part that goes back.
That's all done to the layer. That was all done in a much newer, that was.
Some layer.
It was still, yeah. That's, that's not the same thing. So that's a issue that I'm talking with them. The other issue that I'm talking with them tonight is the Ray Brook Water System upgrade. The only reason I'm bringing it up is so that we're probably going to have to have a talk with the town about increasing what they pay us for Ray Brook. The work it brings because it's, it's going to probably double over in Ray Brook. We're, they're, we're drilling some test wells to start supplying the prisons with water. The first thing is, is get the test wells in, see if they have the capacity to supply the prisons. But it's going to also increase water sampling frequency. Also what they need to be licensed to operate Ray Brook.
Shouldn't the prison pay for it?
They are. But with our 30, 35,000, I don't, they don't see Mindy on there right now. But I think that she should really maybe top it happy. So they, towns seem to go into shock. It goes up more than 2% or something that we charge. It's going to be substantial. I think that we're going to have. We got to make it worth our while to go over there and still do something. We can't take a loss.
I mean, the labor rates haven't gotten up for.
We, we, we increase that gradually with the amount of work we do over there. But what's going to happen is we're going from a C system to a 2B system. And a C system is like very, very small. And there's really, it's pretty simple water testing. And also they, the Department of Health is now saying we have to have a person go over on the weekend, which we didn't before. So there's a substantial amount of work that we're going to have to increase over there. So we should get paid for it. There's, it's still paying us. It's going to be way cheaper than them getting an operator to operate it because you need to.
Brad, so what you're saying is that even though the, the prison is paying for the new well, the new water supply system, what you're saying is because of the increased costs, it moves us up to this 2B and that's where the cost is going to be.
Yeah, we're going to, we're just going to have to have somebody there more often doing more work. So we should get problems paid for that. That's all. And I would like Mindy to just start a conversation with Kathy so that they are aware of this.
You know, that, that relationship has existed for a good number of years with, with us taking care of the Ray Brook system in the town. And I, I, the thought occurs to me that maybe just, just like we do with the OT on, on the Main Street, the charges for equipment and labor get adjusted back. You know, and we're probably going to have to get into some mode like similar to the.
Well, everything that we use over there is charged back to them. You have a separate code for Ray Brook. And we build them back once a year. We pay for it and they pay us back. And they do pay us, I believe it's up to like, it's 35 or $38,000 to maintain Ray Brook. But it's going to, it's going to greatly increase how much work we have to do over there. So that's just why I'm bringing it out now because I, I do know that they, they can't be without an operator who's going to pay two of them. And right now, there's only two of us that are. Even though all our guys are licensed at a higher level.
Yep.
No, it's, the higher level, Department of Health has taken it away. It used to be if you had an A license, you could cover a B system. Department of Health says no now, even though the A is like five times harder to get. So any of us, the only ones of us that are capable of having a B license are the ones that operated a B system to begin with, which was, that's up to Kathy. So if you have a B license, then I, I'm going to have to request to have mine back because I had a B license. Then I got an A, so I'm going to have to get mine back. So that we have a backup operator if we need to.
Sounds progressive.
Yeah.
Yep. No timeline when this is all going to happen.
Yeah, but this will all be working with them. This will, this will be all, they will, they'll probably need it for their next upcoming. So that's why I just want to get a conversation now so they're aware of it before then. And then maybe the only other thing I have is talk with Stuart again. Sounds like he's going to be leaving about maybe December next year.
Next year, Mr.
It was this year, this, this coming December. He's not sure if he's leaving at the beginning of the end now. Working right now with Tom and Jason on getting them their final licenses. So if you have four A for the wastewater and they're one A for finished water. So probably going to move Tom into the role that Stuart's doing right now, filtration plant. Jason will stay at the wastewater plant. So they will, they will go back and forth, but Tom will be the one that does what Stuart does now and go every day. So there probably will need to be some talk once this all moves forward about compensation for the two of them. Because they need to be licensed to higher levels and taking on quite a bit more responsibility with Department of Health and D E C.
Can they handle the workload?
They're going to need another person at their wastewater plant to cover what they, when they're not there. Because they are losing a person. But it's no different than what you have now. But I just think that in the next six months, we probably should sit down with them.
Yeah, it's okay with Jason that Tom takes over. They've been equals for so long.
Well, they don't, they, Tom will be able to go water plant in the morning and everything, but still be able to help Jason during the afternoon. And then we'll have our backup operators like we do right now. We have a lot of operators. But that's basically covering the paperwork with the Department of Health and the D E C that you have to, they're going to have to deal more than any of the things that break right now. The things that break are covered by, it's usually Tracy, Pat, DJ and Jeremy that are covering most of the water problems up there and how they grow.
Hopefully that's going to go away. This gets real.
And that's, that's the last thing. I have a conference call tomorrow on one, one P M with Kathy Swazo and her group. Department of Health is supposed to chime in. They still have not sent the final stamped plans back. What happened was we answered all their questions, got everything in. We didn't hear anything back. Didn't hear anything back. They told us they'd have them back to us by the end of last month. And then we found out the person that was reviewing all the plans suddenly left Department of Health. So they are no longer working there. So now there's somebody else that has all that work plus their own work. So they, they say that we should have the plans back anytime. But we're going to have a conference call tomorrow because.
Still that person has to start from scratch.
Because this was part of that grant. So they're questioning with, all the state agencies are questioning the road detour on this section of the water main for phase B. We're, so we're not even there yet. But that's what the conference call is about tomorrow. Which, we're not even there yet, but that's what the conference call is about tomorrow. They don't, they don't wanna give us the go ahead for all, everything else. Because they don't wanna know what we're gonna do with traffic down here once we start this section, which is, I don't even know what's in the way.
Now, the water line's had a number of.
Yeah, we'll go from the, where we leave off from the main street project to the traffic, like eventually.
And when the time we're waiting on, I'll be long gone.
But, but ultimately that, that piece of the line is gonna, it's gonna have to be replaced, but. Yeah, we gotta get. We've got on the drawing board right now, we, have, have, is all the engineering been done on, on the other portion?
Uh, not, not completely, not everything, that's why we're talking about the.
Apparently that's, that's still part of the state highway too.
That's why they wanna know what we're doing.
Well, I can, I can understand why they wanna know, but.
They were confusing this project with that project.
Well, it's just because. They're having a hard time. Just concentrating on the water plant because there's two, there's three components to that, the water plant. The main street project and the tower.
And the tower.
But we split it into actually four, because we got this one rolling with the main street project, water plant going, and then there's gonna be this section in space B. And then the water tank eventually. These two sections are. Years away.
Years away. At least three years away.
So, and that's, that's what the conference call is about tomorrow. Hopefully, we can still get to bid by the end of this one. I probably wish you good luck with that.
Kimball. You wanna, you wanna speak to the uh, uh, discussion we had this morning on, on sub one?
Certainly. Um, so sub one. We're probably eighty, uh, ninety percent finished with it. The last thing left was to do the relay upgrades to banks three and four. Um, in order to do that, there was an obstacle in the way, it was the NIP metering structure that it, the above grade portion of it's now removed. And we're left with the below grade section, so that's a quick demo, but. PLM has been working on the interconnection drawings to do the relay upgrade. And one of the things that happened back when we did circuit eighteen was we had to demo a set of voltage transformers. That were located on a pole, um. On a forty foot pole, you only have so much real estate, so the, the solution was we were gonna relocate them to the end of the. Substation bus, um. This is related to the bond as far as being able to pay for the project from it, but I didn't really wanna put it into the. Original PLM agreement from two thousand eighteen, because I think that we can finish that, what was in that original scope. Um, under budget, so. What I had them do was prepare a new proposal that would include relocating the voltage transformers to the bus on transformer banks three and four. Um, and the second thing is. We'd like to be able to run two of the transformers in parallel. And what we just kinda discovered when we had to run the whole village off one sub was we have much better capabilities. Actually doing it from the powerhouse substation rather than the firehouse substation. Um, down here, we have approximately sixty, sixty megs, just shy of that of transformation. At the firehouse, um. It's closer to. Forty and. The, if we can run the two. Um, transformers three and four at sub one in parallel. It basically allows the unused capacity from one of them to be used on our third feeder that's connected to the two. So it's a good contingency planning, um, I guess at this point I'd ask if anyone has any questions on it.
Well, I understand that. Yeah, we're gonna have a question. We're like, we're not electrical engineers.
Okay, I tried to do a screen share and I could have shown you the drawing, but Jason's not there to help me out on that, so.
Well, I think, uh, you know, a, a, again, I mean, obviously we're sitting here and, and I think we all have the same, uh. Lack of, of. Familiarity to be able to intelligently make a decision, so I think what Kimball is suggesting here is that we engage PLM. To uh, work with him on that particular project.
I mean, as long as our engineers say it's a good idea.
They agree it's a good idea.
People say they thought of it when you seen it on Wepas.
Yeah. Anybody have any other thoughts on, on, on how we, any alternative way to address that? I think we have to rely on the people that understand the systems. Yeah, Kim, are you saying that this, this one come out of some leftover bond funds?
I, it, I would believe that Mindy would advise to take it out of leftover bond funds.
Well, if there's some leftover, I would agree.
There is this three hundred thousand dollars still.
And, and I, you were right, you said this was about a, the dollar amount of this, I, I saw it earlier today, Kim, can you refresh our memory?
Um, fifteen thousand nine hundred, not to exceed.
For engineer.
And I've been pretty good at that, so. And I think we can finish everything that's left there for about a hu, for a hundred thousand. One thing I did forget in the budget to finish everything was we owe the APA some trees. So I reached out to Jim Gerard just for a budget per pre, per tree. So that I could add that to what it will take to complete the project.
You mean some trees you cut down, they said needed to be replaced?
No, a condition of the permit was we had to do some screening, um, about where the Conex box is now.
Really?
Yes.
Well, if, if, if it's a condition of the permit, it's gotta be done. Did they say how long?
They didn't say the size, but they said we had to replant them until they lived. I can recall that in the language.
So I think, I think the general consensus here, Kim, is that, uh, is, is go ahead and work with PLM. Uh, which you can do with a P O, I guess, at this point for that amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see what else we got on here. Geez, we're, we're right on target here pretty much, just to very quickly, uh. Tomorrow evening, Bill and Chuck and myself and Theresa Wilson of Bolio Consulting. Will be, uh, will be at the, uh, in a room at the conference center where we'll, where we will be. I, I guess the correct description is we'll be listening to. Uh, anybody that's in attendance, I can say that as of today, when I checked. Theresa confirmed it with Anita, there's only one reservation for the twenty seats that are open. So it may not, uh. I, 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 I would, I would like, it, it's been published in the papers, I would like to think that the people are very happy. What we're, we're doing, but understand that, correct me here if I'm wrong, Bill, because you and Chuck have done a lot of legwork here. That once the uh. Policies and procedures have been, we get through this phase, there will be a, they, they, they will be published and there will be a public presentation of.
Well, it has to be adopted by the village in a resolution, so.
But before it gets adopted by the village, I believe there's a public presentation, so there is. Another opportunity in this process for the public to comment.
Yeah, so the community forum will be, they can email questions, they could. Facebook questions, they could write a letter, you know, other, other, other opportunities to. You know, first you have the listening session, you develop the policy, which we have a draft of now. And then maybe any, you know, subscriptions, additions that we may have to add to it. We'll put it out for the public to view and have another, uh, have another short period and then adopt it. And then, you know, after that, it's, it's still gonna be a, there's gonna be an annual community meeting that's, uh, you know. A listening session more or less on, on, uh, on problems that there may be with our policies.
So a, as I, as we look at the calendar, um, the obligation is on the mayor to. Present this very first to, uh, one of the agencies of the state. I think it might be Secretary of State, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, yes. And that may, we may, we may time wise have to require a special board meeting at the end of March. For that purpose, I'm thinking, because our, our meetings in March. Yeah, they don't, they don't quite fall.
March, the first and the fifteenth.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure that we'll be ready, we, we will probably not have finished the. Presentation before the, the game, so I'm guessing we're gonna have to go.
We'll be pretty, we'll be close.
We'll be close. But you might be aware of the fact that it may have to be one extra. We'll get that done. The luckyness mayor won't have to deal with it. Okay, looks like we pretty much have covered the agenda that I had here, is for anybody. Like to bring up or, or question, is it on the agenda?
Right, we talked earlier about the, the destination management, where is my money? Do you recall what we used to plan for the comprehensive plan? For both village and town because.
Yeah.
Be another expensive.
I, I think we put about twenty into it the last time, that was back in two thousand fourteen.
We both did, both town and village.
I believe so. But I wouldn't expect there will be any less system in the realm when it comes up. I think Dean's, uh. In, in discussions with Dean, I think he's indicated that the comprehensive plan would be taken up once the destination marketing plan is completed by, uh. Roast and, uh. So that would, I, I think he was thinking that it would be September before they get around to working on the comprehensive plan and I would be, I, I would. Suspect that there could be some slippage in that. Keep in mind, we've got a new community development officer that may be coming online February tenth, depending on the town.
I think you started today at nine thirty.
Is that right?
It must be nine o'clock or eight thirty.
At least stick my head in the door, she's upstairs, I should at least stick my head in the door and say hello to. But, uh, yeah, so, so that's, that's the probable timetable for the comprehensive plan more.
One thing I know is. This beach volleyball championship game in the main parking lot. Are we willing to allow that in the main parking lot or not because.
Well, it's early. I think, I think. Moore's Larry is the point person for that activity, you know, I think, uh, I think, you know, we need to, now that we have the contractor in place. And, and engineering is, so. My, my understanding is a good chunk of that parking surface, uh, and this, this certainly will involve the towns portion. Uh, they, uh. Maybe permeable finishes, so I don't know how you put sand down on top of that.
It's not even that, it's, uh, what they're talking this summer is. This is one of the things that I think is going to be asked is during that summer break, is there stuff they can do? Like in the parking lot. Like work that, so that, like. Well, you know, what they're talking is they're gonna, they, they were talking, trying to get the water line in the first half, then. The July, August, I know it would take a parking, but they were wondering if there was any way they could use. The parking lot, maybe do some work across the parking lot down the lower end, but the drainage structure's in, uh. We, we talked a little bit about.
Well, remember, this is twenty, this is twenty-two for that, so this year we're, we're certainly not.
It's this year, Mary.
Twenty-one?
Yeah, for the volleyball, isn't it?
They've gotta put six courts out at the lacrosse fields.
I don't, I don't, all I know is that they keep asking, is that gonna be allowed because we're, there was work that we could do. But they, I was asked this morning about it, so I, somebody must be. Is it this year?
They may have pushed it off for maybe, maybe it was pushed off.
But let's, uh, let's see if we can get, uh, either I can get from Ashley or we can get from Greg, probably Ashley at this point. Um, I, I, I know the supervisor and I are, are, are of the thought that. Beach volleyball doesn't really fit and what, what, I mean, Jay and I were talking about, he said, why aren't we using the ski jumps which are ready to go? And, and running and flying a trial like that would be, uh, would, would be much.
Why wouldn't you, if we're gonna do a championship court, why wouldn't you do it at the beach? For the sacred state.
Interesting thought.
Beach volleyball. They would love that.
I think we, I, I think we got to look at the dimensions that are required.
I don't know, it's the same.
It's not this one. It's not the same stadium.
So all, they're gonna, they were talking about. Yeah, that's what they were talking about. Oh, now, or there or have it all down there, I just, it's just gonna be.
How many should sell them now?
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, we're gonna tell it, you're not.
Twenty, 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 twenty-six, twenty-six.
Our, our, I'm, I'm guessing that our people are, they're gonna start that, they're gonna probably do some of that parking lot early.
Yeah, sounds to me like, what I was just, what I was told.
We're gonna say, we're gonna say, yeah.
Well, I think, I think what we're all, what we're all waiting on is, is the work schedule, so we can, we can make informed, uh. Decision here, but that's.
The E V, the E V charters down.
I mean, if, if, if the contractors are working in that area, I don't, I don't see how we can. And, and we need to let them know that as soon as.
That's, that's what we're, that's what we're getting.
Yeah, but I, I was in a conversation where they were talking about six courts now surrounding the lacrosse fields. And I know Derek was talking about the, the specs called the concrete, uh. Frames and Derek, Derek was talking about using, uh, uh. Pressure treated timber for that, which you can take up and use somewhere else. But, uh, one other thing that came up, it's unrelated to the beach volleyball, but the supervisor called me the other day and asked me if there was an agreement between the village and the town. That allows the town or the village to operate the parking lot, uh, that portion that's owned by the town. I've never seen it, I had a discussion with Robie several years ago about it and Robie, uh. I think it might have been right after we moved from having people there and put in pay stations. And Robie's, uh, answer to me was, um, the, uh, you know, the village is putting in the, we, we blacktop it, we maintain it. We pay for the, we, we operate, pay for and operate the pay stations and we also pay the person that makes sure that people use the pay stations. So I, 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 I said to Jay, I've never seen and I'm not aware of it, but apparently Derek raised the question. Uh, of, of any agreement, so I don't know if we're gonna be working on an agreement to, to, to. Document what we have there for an agreement, but that's another factor we need to. Keep in mind, I did say to Jay, I said, remember, if, if you take over that portion and you operate your own parking lot, you've got. You've, you've either gotta pay somebody to collect the parking fees and I said, by the way, the lower end of the lot is not where the real money is. So I said, tell, tell, tell Derek, he, he, he needs to get all the, Kathy and Mindy better get, put their heads together and have all the right backs.
Or he can find something else to work on, I would imagine, because that doesn't make very much sense to me.
Well, that's, well, it doesn't make sense to me either, but, but the question came up, so it's at least to be explored.
Don't they have anything better to do? I'm just.
Well, I think, I think Derek is looking level for the town and I don't blame him, I know that their finances are not quite as. Strong as the villages are.
There's some way you're right, it could be a substantial increase. It's gonna be a huge, it's gonna be a lot of revenue increase.
I hate to prolong this meeting, but I just, with, with the significant tax base that the, the town in North Elba.
I hate to prolong this meeting, but I just, with, with the significant tax base that the, the town in North Elba and the very minimal amount of services they provide. How are they in a crunch budget wise?
Partly Jason was the, the, for a few years, the village or the town left their fund balance down. Uh, I, Roby and I have talked about that off and on over the years. And, uh, his view was that that money belonged to the taxpayers. So they, they gradually lowered it. Frankly, I think they're, in my opinion, right now, they, they may be a little bit too low. We're, our, our fund balance is, is strong at the moment. But, uh, keep in mind that we're going into some construction projects where we're gonna be having different money while we wait for the funds to come back. If you don't have the money in, in your account, you go to the bank and you borrow.
Sure. They couldn't raise the taxes all these years.
Yeah, Roby let his tax rate down and, and let that fund go. And so, uh, he, he used, he used the fund balance a little bit more aggressively. Than what we have, uh, so far.
Oh, cause we generally, we stayed well below the two percent or just about the two percent. Do they, do they keep it significantly lower than the two percent? I just, or did they not manage their money that well? That's what I just don't understand.
I, 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 I think for what they have, uh, their money, you've gotta remember their fund balance is probably twenty percent of what ours is. But they're not operating water departments and, uh, and, and they're, they're, they've got what payroll of fourteen people. Something like that. We've got about seventy-two.
I don't, I, maybe I can come in and maybe you could educate me on, on it a little bit more.
You know, I, 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 I'm happy to do that. It should be done before, before you lose me. Uh, and maybe the next mayor won't want me around.
Here's the money that way. Look at the town budget. Well, I, well, the budget would say one thing, but.
About the history of this fund.
Yeah, sure. Yes.
You're gonna spend the money. The A U D and, and by the way, we're, that's the next step we're looking at with our, with our accounts right now. Mindy's beginning work with them and getting it done.
I don't wanna make any accusations. I just find this sort of pursuit into the parking, uh, potential, trying to navigate into some parking revenue. Seems ill advised, I think.
Yeah, that's. Uh, and again, we'll, you know, if, 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 if there's any, if the conversation gets any more serious and pursue, we'll, we'll certainly document the. Records, but because we can, we pretty much can figure out, we know what the pay station's on the. We know what every pay station does for revenue.
Have you talked to Janet about this? Cause, cause I, I believe Janet said there was, and she told me when we were looking into this.
If, if there is, I'll, I'll ask her about it. Cause, uh, I, I, I looked a few years ago and the only thing I came up with, which she had never seen. Is what, is what gave the village, conveyed to the village, the easement to operate the parking lot on the, uh, on the Lucy property. When they moved Grandview Hill. That was way back in the fifties. And I, I did, I did provide Janet with a copy of that and then we filed, it's filed on the village records. That's, that, that's one of the really hard things is, is having your records. I mean, we're, we're way better shape than we used to be. But, um, for example, uh, we've got some litigation going on over unpaid water bill. And one of the things that they requested was a copy of a resolution that formed the water department. Village was incorporated nineteen hundred and we have, we have minutes between nineteen hundred and nineteen twenty-seven that are not legible. They're handwritten, they've gotten old and faded. Um. The best that I could provide, I can't find the resolution that formed the water department, but I could, in nineteen twenty-eight, I had minutes that referred to the appointment of a superintendent of the water department. So we have to have that. And that's the best that we can do. We just, we just, the records aren't clear enough that we can, we can produce a, uh. Resolution, but you wouldn't be appointing a water superintendent if you didn't have a water department. So we're, 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 we're trying that approach. That's. Hope, hopefully we'll be okay. It isn't, it isn't a, an earth shattering issue. It's just somebody. There's a lot of them. Anything else? Otherwise, uh, it's five minutes after five, we can, we can adjourn the word session. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.